To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please be seated. Item number two is the invocation for that, our good friend Pastor Dennis Hudson. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate this privilege. And let's pray. Gracious Father, we just come today, first of all, we want to say thank you for the beautiful day. Thank you for the rain, for those who received it. Lord, we thank you that our weather has been cooler than normal. That is a blessing and a gift. Lord, we thank you too for the opportunity to gather and deal with things that matter to all of us. It's a beautiful city. Father, we thank you for that. We thank you for all these individuals who serve you by serving the city. We ask that you would bless them. Especially ask that you would watch over our police officers and our firemen, that they would be safe in what they do. Lord, we just ask that this evening you would be in the midst of these people that are making decisions, that you would guide them with your wisdom and grace. More than anything, Father, that you would bless them, as you've blessed this city. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Bless you.
Thank you, Reverend. Item number three is honor participation. That's on the screen. If there's an item you wish to speak on, please see the city secretary and sign up for it. Reminder, per state law, you're only allowed to discuss items that are on the posted agenda. Also, if it's a public hearing, once I call public hearing, folks can just come up to the lectern and speak, once we start having speakers. If there's a large number of people who want to speak, we will limit folks to three minutes per person, so just for time and convenience. And please silence cell phones, et cetera, so we can have a good quiet meeting. Item number four is a consent agenda. Item A is action regarding minutes of July 6th. B is action regarding the findings and agreements for delinquent tax collection from Linebarger. C is action regarding a license agreement with Union Pacific Railroad for 140-volt wireline crossing. I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Charlie, second.
What? I'm sorry.
Can we pull, can we pull B?
If you want to, sure. All right, so I will entertain motions for A and C only.
Okay, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the actions A and C of the consent agenda.
Okay. Second again, okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum. Councilmember Big Horse is out this evening. So going to B, and let me pull up B real quick. B is action regarding the findings, delinquent tax collection services with Linebarger, et cetera. Yes, sir, Mr. Beasley. What question do you have?
I guess, I mean, I know we had an email that was sent out earlier about this, but have we used them before as far as for delinquent?
We, we have used Linebarger for delinquent court collections since 2016. Previously, we had a small, one-person law firm doing delinquent property tax collections. But as you can see in the backup material, our delinquent collections is by far the lowest in the surrounding area. We feel like Linebarger has a bigger staff, a bigger database, and would do a better job at collecting our delinquent property tax collections. We've been very pleased with them and haven't had any issues with them as far as the delinquent court collections. And so that's why we're recommending going with this new firm.
Now, okay, one more question.
Sure.
So, the delinquent tax amount, is it substantial enough to require this?
We have about 300 and, about 330,000 in outstanding delinquent property taxes.
Okay. One more question. Okay. Any other questions, council? Yes, sir, Nicky.
Does it cost us any more money, or is it just the 20% that's what they make?
The, the fee is paid by the delinquent taxpayer. So the city would collect the full amount of taxes that is owed to us.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for item B.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item B of the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
Mr. Beasley, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Kim. All right, moving forward. Get back here. Item number five, consideration action regarding approval for final plat for the grand at Saginaw Lot 1, Block B in Belt Mill. And for that, where is Father? That's Rick Trice, right?
That's me.
Rick Trice, Director Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a final plat for the grand. It's a apartment complex that's going to be located in the Belt Mill development. You have seen it before, in April, you approved a site plan for the apartment complex. So this is the final plat of that, of that property, about 9.84 acres in the whole development. So if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Council questions for Rick on this? All right, if no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve consideration for the approval of the final plat for the grand at Saginaw Lot 1B, Block B, Belt Mill, being built in the Thomasville.
Okay. I'll second.
Mr. Beasley, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Rick. Item number, that was six, consideration action regarding the final plat. Sorry, trying to find my stuff. Consideration action regarding the final plat for Belt Mill Parkway and Millstone Road. That, Director Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. Essentially, this is a right-of-way dedication, but it's being done by plat. It's for the two main arteries that go through Belt Mill, Belt Mill Parkway, and the north-south collector, which will be Millstone Road. About 9.112 acres of right-of-way within, between those two roadways. Little unusual, we will be following up with some easements that are off-site on undeveloped property, platted, unplatted property. And then those easements, if accepted by the city, would show up on the recorded plats as the property around those two roadways develops. So if you've got any questions for that, I will try to answer those. I will just state also that this is done to facilitate earthwork on the property, so in the next coming days, you should see some activity on Belt Mill in terms of cutting those roadways. So anyway, if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Yeah, so step one for new development is always a road. So this is a road. This is getting the road going through Belt Mill, which is step one. You can see the shaded areas there are essentially drainage, which will be some nice, eventually be some nice water features, along with some, probably some park as well, but that's down the road. So step one is a, is a road, get that going, Belt Mill will get started.
Road and off-site utilities, which is why we're getting easements.
Right. Appreciate that. All right, so questions for this? Anybody? Questions, concerns, issues on Belt Mill? If no questions, no concerns, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consideration and action regarding the approval of the finer plot for the Belt Mill Park and Millstone Road right-of-way.
All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Close, opposed? Excellent, thank you. Thank you, folks. Moving forward, item number seven, consideration action regarding a development agreement with HHS Residential regarding exterior masonry and neighborhood setback requirements on land, approximately 20.8 acres, abstract, nine. For that, again, Director Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this project, or this agreement is related to Villas of Willow Creek, which is a development that's been working its way through Plan Commission, and you've seen it and continue that item. I believe the applicant has withdrawn that item at this point. But in their meetings with the neighborhood to, to the south of the development, they've identified several issues that the neighborhood wants to have happen. Some of those are the architectural materials, which are stipulated in the agreement. Also, some setback that are, that are identified in a site plan that's associated with the agreement also, and then a perimeter fence or screening fence that's associated with that development. So that's what this tries to accomplish, to bind the developer to, to comply with those requirements, again, to try to satisfy their dialogue between the neighborhood and the development. So I think Bren has some additional information that he'd like to share with you also.
Sure, Bren.
Yeah, absolutely. Just, let me preface this by saying several of you have asked that we be truly transparent with regard to this agreement, and I think that's the correct approach. And so, starting from the beginning, and during the 2019 Texas legislative session, the legislature decided in their infinite wisdom that cities should no longer have any regulatory control over exterior materials, building materials. Essentially requiring that if a material is listed as an approved material in the International Building Code, a developer is allowed to use it, notwithstanding any exterior masonry or other material requirements by ordinance. So we are no, now no longer able in a PD ordinance or in our city code to dictate what the material standards must be.
Previously, we had an ordinance that said all that.
We did, that's correct. That's correct. And most, most cities did, candidly. And obviously, based on the lamenting and protests by members of the builders' community, the legislature capitulated and decided to take that authority away from us entirely. So all that's left in that statute is you can have a builder use materials of the city's choosing if you have the voluntary consent of the builder. And so, the only way that I could translate that into something that might be binding, because voluntary consent is revocable, right? The only way I can...
Say that in English, please.
Sure. So voluntary consent is, is consent today, but you can change your mind tomorrow. That's not binding. That's, I promise I'll do it, you know what? I woke up this morning and I changed my mind. What's the city's recourse? There is none. So the only way to make it binding, in my mind, is by contract. So in Texas, in order for a contract to be enforceable, it has to be supported by consideration from the other side. In other words, both parties have to have skin in the game. Otherwise, if you just have a contract that says, "I promise to do all these things," those are just, that's revocable as well. That's, that's something you can change your mind on, because you haven't, you, you haven't relied on, and you, and they haven't relied on anything that you've given them.
Consideration, you mean money.
Money.
Financial consideration.
Essentially money. It can be action in some cases, but you have, the city has to do something in return. So in the past couple of development agreements that we've done, the, what, when we have required adherence, compliance with exterior masonry standards, in exchange, the city has agreed contractually to support and create economic development tools. Public improvement district, we've talked about a TERS. We have, we will have, we have a contract with one developer to waive 10 building application permit fees, actual dollars that we otherwise would have received. In this case, understandably so, this particular development, and this is a policy, policy decision, but does, likely doesn't merit an economic development incentive. It's purely residential, there's not any economic development benefit, commercial development, retail, et cetera, that's going to come of this. So we have a dilemma. How do we make the promise to use 75% exterior masonry binding? What do we have as skin in the game? So the only thing we have listed is an agreement to abandon certain right-of-way within the development. The concern I have is it's not clear, the courts have said, "Consideration cannot be an exercise of a governmental function." In other words, you can't sell your vote. We, we can't say, "We'll give you PD zoning if you do this. We'll abandon our property if you do this." So there's a question about whether or not there's adequate consideration in this agreement to ultimately make it enforceable.
Can you explain abandonment of roadway, please?
Right. So at some point in time, there was roadway dedicated presumably by plat to the city. And as part of the negotiations with the neighboring community, in order to avoid traffic circulation through the existing community, we would give up that right-of-way and prevent a public road from linking from this proposed development to the existing development, thereby preventing the, the traffic influx that otherwise we had planned to occur. Because we've never built out this right-of-way on this tract, it's just what we call a paper street. And so, we, we can abandon it when it is, when the property is final-platted. And the way you do that is you just simply don't depict that right-of-way on the new plat, and it just goes away. And so that's, that's the consideration, the consideration that's articulated in the agreement that is purporting to support the exchange of promises. Whether or not that's sufficient remains to be seen, but I think it's important to be transparent about it. As I said in an email to each of you, I have no reason to believe that the developer is going through this exercise and signing a contract simply as a bait and switch or an illusion. There, I have no basis to believe that that's the case. But I think, I believe the developers' representatives are here, and they can certainly speak to that point.
So try to summarize some of this. And Bren is often, is very cautious, he's our legal counsel. His job is to keep us safe in doing the right thing legally, and to be the protector of the, he's very protective of the city. So what it means really is unless we give the developer $300,000, $400,000, this is not a fully legally binding or enforceable contract, if, if there's a breach of contract. That doesn't mean the developer's not going to do it, it just means if something happens, we go to court, we lose.
I, I think there's, there's a good chance that abandoning a paper street that we never built may not be enough consideration to make the developer's promises in the agreement legally binding.
And I don't think, and we've talked a little bit about this, council, but I'm not in favor of giving the developer $300,000 or $400,000. I think they're moving forward, they don't need our help. And that would be what I would do. The city would be giving $300,000 or $400,000, whatever the number is, of tax dollars to this developer. So that's, that's it, and that's why we've thought about this, and that's why I'm certainly not in favor of that. But as Bren said, it doesn't put as much teeth in this contract as we would like, as we normally have.
So...
Yes, sir.
You had mentioned, Brett, you had mentioned waiving fees. I know nothing about this part of the stuff, but I'm assuming that they, as they build this, there are certain types of fees and stuff they have to pay.
Yes, sir.
We waived those fees along with the abandonment of the road?
I think, I think that would certainly support the enforceability of this agreement. As I said, we waived building permit application fees for 10 structures for the Belt Mill development, and that was the consider, legal consideration for that.
Gabe, yeah?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we did, and also along McElroy, the assisted living cottages that are in construction now, that was incentivized through a 380 agreement. We waived the building permit fees, which were substantial, probably $50,000 plus, you know.
And it's, these are soft dollars, right? So you're not actually paying anything, you're just not recovering the administrative costs incurred in reviewing the permit application.
Even if we waived this, these amount of fees, that wouldn't add up to the full cost of the masonry, though. So would that...
And that's okay. It doesn't, it does not need to be an equivalent cost. It just needs to be something that's of value. And you may have noted, I listed in the agreement that it's for $10 and other good and valuable consideration. That's really just paying lip service to the concept of consideration. I would feel much more comfortable if it, if it was more than that. But it can be a waiver of otherwise recoupable fees, so that the city is not actually paying anything.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make clear, we, we don't have an exhibit here, but the agreement mentions the right-of-way. So if, if this were a standard project, absent this agreement, we would require an applicant to plat and build a public street that would connect the neighborhood through to McElroy. So after a neighborhood meeting, the request was neighbors didn't want another through street through. So that's why the applicant has said, "Okay, we won't build the street," which is acknowledged in the agreement. So I just want to kind of make that clear. The development as proposed now, the interior streets are private, they're not, won't be publicly maintained, and they're completely within the development.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions for Bren on the agreement?
Well, I'm just, to me, my big thing on this is the citizens that I talk to, they wanted this in here to have assurance. I guess, I guess, we're very like words, there are some trust issues, and they wanted this to be binding. So I, I don't know how we, if, I don't know how we'd go about getting this added. Do we, does somebody make a motion to table it and give a chance to have that added?
We, we can make a motion with the condition that X number of building permit application fees be waived. And I can add it after the fact, and it does not need to come back to council.
So we're not saying what number equals X?
Yeah, it does not have to equal, it does not have to be the same value as what has been given up.
No, no, no. I'm saying, so like with Belt Mill, there was 10 building permits.
Correct.
How would we quantify it, is your question, right?
Well, no, I'm just saying, we're not putting a number on X right now. X number of building fees.
We need to put some kind of number on it, though, right?
Or are we doing that now?
Well, we'd need to put some kind of number. What would we put?
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we say a number then?
You don't have to say a number, we could just, well, we don't have to say a dollar amount number, we can say a number of permit.
Permits, right.
Correct.
Do you have, off the top of your head, how many that would need to be?
Gabe has that answer, that information.
I mean, based on recent multifamily projects and the assisted living, the cottages, which are pretty similar, you're probably talking 50,000 plus, would you think? Maybe more, 75,000 in building permit fees?
Yeah, but that's a dollar amount. How many permits?
I mean, but how many, for this particular development, like 20, 25?
He wants to know how many permits.
Yeah, we, we would have, because it's one project, even though there's separate dwelling units, I think we'd have one overall building permit. Which would, you know, be a pretty, since it's a substantial project, pretty substantial cost. So...
Well, does it have to be one? Could we split it into two?
I'd defer to the city attorney. I think we could do whatever the pleasure of the council is.
I'm just trying to make it work so the citizens get what they want.
Understand.
We get a binding contract.
Understand.
Could we say a dollar amount? Waive permits up to X dollar amount?
You could.
Yes, sir. What is a, what is a dollar amount that would be legally enforceable? 10,000, 20,000, 30,000? What's, what's a, what's a number?
I, I mean, I think $10,000 worth of otherwise collectible fees would be supportable.
Let's, hold that, we're not going to vote on that yet, but hold that, hold that thought right now. I'd like to hear from, any other questions for Bren before we move on? I'd like to hear from the developer next. Developers here, developers representative, one of those folks, please come up.
Evening. Mayor, Council, Mason Meyer with HHS Residential.
Matt McGee, HHS.
Okay.
Guys, we're open to any and all of the above. We want the residents to feel comfortable with what we're building here. We have no intention of forgetting our commitment to do masonry. So whatever the mayor and commission decides is appropriate, then that's, that's what we would agree to. I was under the impression that the $10 independent consideration was enough. I didn't know that this was under, under question. Just as a, anecdotally here, HHS Residential is connected to Highland Homes. Highland is, is a very reputable home builder, been in business in Texas for more than 35 years. We've built an astounding reputation in the, in the space, and we're certainly not looking to tarnish that here. We have every intention to design and build an outstanding community, and, and we're doing it with partners who carry that same, that same mentality. So I honestly say, guys, whatever it takes to make everyone comfortable with the enforcement of this agreement, we're comfortable, even to the extent that was only $10.
Could you just sort of walk us through how we got here? I know it's been a long winding journey for y'all, but walk us through just a brief summary of how we got here and the steps y'all have taken.
Sure. Yeah, certainly. So our initial...
You sit up in front of the microphone so everybody can hear you, please.
Our initial proposal really included more of a farmhouse-style product. We quickly learned from discussion with both P&amp;Z and the neighbors, we need to fit in more with what's currently existing, which is a 75% masonry. We, we had two meetings with the neighborhood and, and tried to do all we can to accommodate any concerns that they had as far as setbacks, obviously the right-of-way connection for traffic, and the masonry requirement. So through the changes we've made to our site plan, we feel we've, we've appropriately done that. And what we were requested by the neighbors was to provide a binding document, a development agreement. And that's why we're, we're here tonight, is to lock in a development agreement that requires us of what we're saying we're going to do. And like Matt said, if, if $10 is, is good with you guys, we're good with it. We're not going to go back on our word on this. We're going to build a 75% masonry community.
Bren, if I can ask, I mean, is there any additional language that could be added to independent consideration that would just make this enforceable?
You know, I'm trying to think how, how to do it, and I'm, I'm open to ideas, candidly. I agree that ordinarily $10 would be sufficient. What I'm worried about is the preemption in the statute, and overcoming a court saying that's nominal consideration, given the fact that there's clear statutory preemption. Trying to make it a true economic development incentive, and I'm worried that it's not just the consideration issue, is $10 going to constitute an economic development incentive?
Sure.
That, that won't buy a two-by-four, you know? So that's my, that's my concern.
Can you explain, you said statutory?
Right, so the, the...
Can you explain that in English?
Sure. So that's, that's the comment I made earlier about the legislature basically saying that cities cannot require builders to use any material in particular, so long as the material is in the building code, they are allowed to use it. And so, it, it poses a, in my mind, a greater hurdle than just identifying consideration. It's, it's providing a true binding economic development incentive, so that we overcome what otherwise is clearly preemption. And whether you do it by regu, by regulation or, or contract supported by nominal consideration, I think we're going to be faced with, if it's challenged, and I have, again, I have no reason to, to believe that you're not sincere in this, but if it's challenged, we're going to be faced with a court that has the statute in front of them, and asking me, "Why is $10 enough to overcome the legislature's intent to preempt you?" And that's, that's what I'm concerned about. I mean, we, we could, and if you all would provide something in writing on the record that you consider that to be, you know, supportable, and we can add it as an exhibit, something like that, just, that's an alternative.
Well, speaking selfishly here, I mean, we're in favor of, by whatever means necessary to, to get everyone comfortable with it this evening. As you mentioned, it's been a long road, and, and, you know, we're very excited about this project. We have a lot invested in the project. The partners that we're working with do as well equally. Just a bit more on that relationship. HHS, as I mentioned, is part of Highland Homes. We do a tremendous amount of business in and around the area. We're working with Tricon Residential on this project, who is one of the most sophisticated professional property owners and managers in the nation. They own more than 25,000 rental homes. So this is a, a machine that is already built. Will be professionally managed, and we're in a joint venture whereby HHS and Tricon are, are building this, and will be neighbors with the folks adjacent to us for a very long time. So we have no intention of pulling the wool over anyone's eyes, and, and by whatever means possible to, to get everyone comfortable with our written agreement here. I never, I didn't know that written agreements could be revoked, but whatever we need to do to make sure that it stays intact is, is what we'll do.
Council questions for the developer? Yes, Mayor.
I just have a few comments. I don't normally let my opinions be known about a certain development until it actually comes before us, but this is kind of a unique situation, in that we're being asked to approve a development agreement for a development that hasn't actually come before us for approval or denial. And so, so I'm going to state publicly that I have many reasons to be opposed to the project. Some of them are very broad and very general, and looking to the future of the city, and following good planning principles, and seeking the highest and best use... But this is kind of a unique situation in that we're being asked to approve a development agreement for a development that hasn't actually come before us for approval or denial. And, uh, so, so I'm going to state publicly that I have many reasons to be opposed to the project. Some of them are very broad and very general and looking to the future of the city and following good planning principles and seeking the highest and best use for any particular parcel of land. Um, the, uh, so, so I will not be voting in favor of the development agreement simply because I'm not in favor of the project as far as I've seen, seen it so far. Also, you are planning on going before the planning and zoning again with a new plan, correct?
The plan that we're going to plan and zoning with is the plan that's been presented over the last several neighborhood meetings and circulated within staff.
And the only real change would be if in fact we approved the development agreement, that would be the new part of the plan.
If we approve the development agreement, it would just lock in our existing plan as we've shown it.
Cause-
Also takes into account the, uh, foregoing of Westwood going through, right?
Right.
So, Westwood doesn't go through and the, and the right-of-way there would be abandoned. Um, and I think, I mean, it's important to point out that it's not the same plan, it's, it's a plan that's, that's evolved over time uh, through discussion with the adjacent residents.
Not, not in a very substantial way, in my opinion. So, as it stands right now, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to the city council that the city council deny the request for the zoning change. And that very fact then causes our city council to require a supermajority to go against the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny. So, when you, if you go back before the planning and zoning, it becomes evident that that is in hopes that you will get a different result second time around from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that then it will not require a supermajority if in fact, you know, it would just require a simple majority either way. So I, you know, I'm not in favor of those tactics. And, um, uh, a specific situation that I see in the development plan. The, the perimeter, the perimeter, it says it could be wooden or masonry. And so, if you have a choice, you're probably gonna do wooden. I don't know if you've thought of that, but it would be in constant need of repair and not, not very pleasing to the eye. And if you did decide to say you would do masonry, would that, Bren, if they said they were gonna do a masonry wall, would that also not be enforceable?
So, it would be enforceable as long as it's not attached to the building. So, perimeter walls are fine.
So, that's just a very small insignificant, because the big picture, I'm not in favor of, the big picture. And then I have many, many, many specific items that I'm not in favor of, but-
Listen to the development, the, the development-
Right, so I'm not going to discuss those tonight. But I felt like it was appropriate for me to let you know my feelings and why I would not be approving the development plan.
I appreciate your feedback, and we did specify on the agreement where the masonry and wood fence would be. So along McElroy and the existing north-south right-of-way, we'd have the masonry per city requirements.
Mr. Tucker?
And I can just add, all of those things, other than the materials for the buildings, will, can be in the plan development, zoning development plan as well. So you'll, you can dictate all of those.
The fence can be in the agreement as-
The fence, that's right, the setbacks, all of those things. It's candidly, it's really just, we didn't have to have the others in this agreement, but understand it provides some comfort perhaps to the neighbors. But all of those things can be dictated because we're not preempted in the, in that regard. We're only preempted with regard to the building materials.
Excellent, thank you, Bren. Mr. Tucker?
I'm still kinda hazy on the money part. Whether it's ten dollars or a hundred dollars or a million dollars, they could always come back and, and say that, that's not enough. Not you guys, I'm talking about legislation.
Well, I mean, the, the question is, the legislature typically doesn't interfere with existing contracts. And so that's what this is. And it's a fact question whether or not it's sufficient consideration, and that's a question for a court. So, you're right, I mean, all of the agreements to date that we've entered into where we've created a PID or waived ten building permit fees, it could be set aside. But candidly, a, a, as long as there is some legitimate consideration, courts aren't gonna interfere with two parties that willingly enter a contract. It's just, the contract just has to have some valid consideration for it. And wha- what that valid consideration is, is up for debate, but a- as I said earlier, ordinarily ten dollars may be sufficient, but in this case, we're not just trying to overcome Texas contract law, we're trying to overcome preemption in the Texas government code with respect to building materials.
Well, I'm sure as the city, you know, we don't wanna take these guys to the cleaners, and we don't want them to take us to the cleaners. But, like you said, I mean, where do you come up with a good amount that's okay with everybody?
And there's, there's no precedent, because the statute was adopted in Sep- September first of twenty nineteen. So, w- we don't have any court rulings on whether or not you can, how, how much you need to contribute in order to make the voluntary consent perpetual, um, last forever.
But you feel that with the little road thing you was talking about and ten thousand dollars worth of-
Worth of permits?
Permit fees, you, you-
I think I could stand up and say, you know, th- the, the city truly has a stake in this. Um, and therefore it, it should be enforceable, rather than just ten dollars. I, I, I do, I do.
Charlie, any questions for the developer?
No, I'm done.
Mayor Proton?
Okay, I don't have any, but Cindy asked me to read this. Um, she said she has a small list on Agenda Item Seven. Under the intro, what does in consideration of the foregoing and ten dollars and other good and valuable consideration mean? I think you've answered that. Um, what are the other good and valuable considerations? I think you answered that also. According to Section 1A Architectural Standards in Exhibit B in other locations in this proposed agreement, does the shiplap siding, AKA hardy plank and other similar materials, fit in this definition since part of it, its makeup is masonry or concrete? That's y'all's question, I guess.
Masonry materials would be brick and/or stone, uh, and would not include hardy plank material in any size shape. That needs to be clarified in the develop- development agreement, we're totally fine with that.
I mean, I think you have a pretty comprehensive definition.
It's already there.
Yes.
Very good.
So it's already there?
Bricks, brickstone, concrete, hollow, clay tile, glass block, or combination of these materials laid up unit by unit and set in order.
So it does not include hardy plank, that's not to know.
Okay, Section 1B setbacks, Exhibit C is missing from the document, therefore I recommend this proposal agreement be tabled. Section 1B setbacks?
On, on our iPad one, it isn't, but the-
On the paper it is, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Section eight, can the city, whether the city manager or council, request notification of defaults to the developer?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm having trouble hearing you, I apologize.
Can the- Can the city, whether city manager or council, request notifications of defaults to the developer?
Request, I guess I don't understand the question.
She says, can the city, whether it be the city manager or the council, request notifications of defaults to the developer?
City manager and the council would like to know if we default on our agreement.
I mean, if, if you default on the agreement, I, I, we can certainly alert the council to that fact. Is that, is that the question?
I guess so.
Yes, I mean, absolutely, I mean, we can keep-
I'm just reading what she wrote.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Okay, she said, Gabe, please notify the council of any requests of this nature. I believe the council should be aware due to the concerns raised by the citizens, if you can do that. Exhibit A and C are blank. Gabe, please notify the council of any requests of this nature.
Default.
Yeah, defaults. I believe the council should be aware due to the concerns raised by the citizens, if I understand that, okay. Exhibits A and C are blank, again, I would like to table this island since the council did not, but it's, we've got it written down. And then she says, safety. I have concerns based on the setbacks and design of the development. The homes are too close together, masonry alone is not enough to ensure the safety of the community for, or our first responders. All they will do when this needed, putting our first responders and citizens in a precarious situation is not what I call or will vote for. I guess that's- I am disappointed that staff has not addressed this matter, nor have they provided transparency to the thoughts on the topic for the citizens or their governing body, the city council. I have a friend who recently moved into one of these exclusive type neighborhoods in April. She started to experience buyer's remorse. About a month ago, her street was filled with police, fire, ambulance, and the local gas utility vehicles. The emergency vehicles due to cars parked at the curbs were spread along the street, the most important responders closest to the scene. My friend was not able to get out of their driveway, trapped by the emergency vehicles. Long story short, the woman across the street attempted suicide by turning gas on inside her home. Her selfish actions put the lives of others in danger. A police officer explained to the neighbors that other houses would be, would have been affected had her house exploded. With no way to escape, neighbors would have suffered bodily and property damage. Our first responders will do their job no matter what Tricon decides, but our staff should put our city's safety over development of so-called dream homes. Forget the trends, do what is safe, do what is right for Saginaw. That's what Cindy-
Yeah, something to mention, all of our units are sprinkled as well per fire marshal's request.
Charlie, do you have anything? Mayor Proton for your, okay. Mr. Lawson?
Bren, you mentioned something that, uh, like the, uh, the wall and things like that, that wasn't attached to the house, could be put in the organs?
Correct. Yes, sir.
So, the, I, I know one of the things, I remember, I, Gabe, I sent you an email about, about the mature trees. So that could be added to that, and that would be binding?
Yes.
And the setback-
Landscaping setbacks, just the, the perimeter fencing.
Gabe, whoever, is that going to be added to that?
Mr. Mayor, I would just, that's at the pleasure of the council, but I would define that term. So, mature trees, what, what does that mean? Just make it clear.
I looked that up on the internet, it's a five-year-old tree.
Okay, so I would define height and type, we have a landscaping ordinance.
Yeah, we, we have a, we have landscaping guidelines, I mean, that, I, I don't know, I mean, that would be a question, I guess, for the developer to answer, but- Typically, typically, we measure maturity of the trees by the caliper, so the dimension of the tree, so, uh-
I'm not gonna be sitting out there, or, I'm just, the trees alone, they don't, little sap ones, you know?
Yeah.
I asked the same thing when I looked up, I actually, believe it or not, it's out there on the internet, it's like, what a mature tree should be, five years.
Yeah, I, I don't know how you measure five years looking at a tree, but I-
But anyways, you know, that we don't get hung up on. That, is that stuff y'all could and would, are you going to add that to that part?
Yeah, like I say, if that's the pleasure of the council, so long as it's clear, it could be made clear to the applicant what the expectation is.
Right.
So I would just say, you know, i- is a mature tree definition five-inch caliper or three-inch caliber? You, you tell them so that it's clear.
Just so I'm clear, are we talking about, uh, items above and beyond the city's landscaping ordinance? I'm not sure I understand.
That would be above and beyond, yes. Yep.
If I may, I'm Jerry Silo with JBI Partners, uh, the, one of the consultants for the applicant. I, I would ask the council, please remember, um, the intent is for us to, uh, resubmit, which we have a zoning change for the property. It'll go back to the Plan and the Zoning Commission, where these items like the trees and the fencing can be established in the plan development. And then that will come before the council. The council can add or subtract or do whatever they want to in terms of the plan development standards. The only thing that cannot be addressed in the plan development standards is the masonry requirement.
Yeah.
So everything else that we're talking about this evening, while some things will be covered in the development agreement, the other ones will be covered in the plan development standards.
Yeah, I got it. I just, I just knew that originally there were three things that, and I just wanted to make sure that somewhere it got covered, that the citizens got what they wanted or needed.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, no, I think that covers it.
Mr. Beasley?
Oh my goodness, this one here, buddy. So, I, I've been at these direct center meetings, I haven't been at any P and Z meetings, and I've met, emailed, talked to several citizens about this project. And I just want the citizens to be happy. So, whatever, I think whatever we have to do, I mean, not even talking about giving up millions of dollars or nothing like that, but whatever we have to do to, to get the citizens not to smile, but at least agreeing a little bit on this development will make me so happy. So, I would want, I, I don't know, we can hear from them first, to see where they're at.
Do you have any, any que- you have any questions for the developer? We'll let the citizens speak.
I think, I, I mean, as far as I, I mean, everything you guys done, I think you guys, you know, have, um, presented your case, and I think you guys are trying to help the citizens out. And, you know, with some of these agreements and some of these things you guys are proposing. I know some of the citizens are, don't want the apartments, and some citizens don't want these houses, and some citizens just want that to be all heartland. But I know that's not the case, so, I mean, I think you guys have done a good job, and just hopefully we can just get past this development agreement and get these citizens smiling, and we can move forward, so.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the effort, your efforts, really. Um, I want everybody to understand that developers did not, did not have to meet with the citizens. Developers don't normally do that. That's not a normal thing, so for y'all to do that, I, I appreciate it. It takes a lot, I know you had to, uh, bend over a lot for this, and we appreciate that. Your flexibility was really appreciated. Uh, met with citizens not more than once, uh, so that's a, something that does not normally happen. Uh, so I want everybody to appreciate that, that these folks have really gone out of the, out of their way to try to do what's best for the whole community. So we appreciate that, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else for the developers, if not, yes.
It, just wanna say one thing, Mr. Mayor. Um, we, on the staff side, we met with, uh, the residents. Uh, Carmen Drake and Paul hosted a garage gab, so we talked about some of these things. You know, we have heard these concerns, and that's why we're here this evening on the staff side. So the comments about whether or not a development is gonna meet minimum safety requirements is honestly silly. I mean, they'll undergo plan review, they'll be sprinkled, the fire chief will attest that they're safe. So, um, that's not fact-based, some of the comments, and it's just important to recognize that this has turned into an emotional situation. This land will develop in the future, um, because private property owners have rights. I've been open and straightforward with Carmen, with Paul. You know, they may not like what I, as staff, the information I have to share with them, but I'm doing my job. And everybody here is doing their job. And that anybody that thinks that they're not doing their job should probably submit some sort of, uh, complaint. If you think, or anyone thinks a law was broken or something was not done correctly. Because I'm telling you, that's not the case. It's just become very emotional, we're here to talk through it, uh, and staff has followed the process at the request of the applicant.
Gentlemen, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, Mayor.
Um, it's not really a question, it's just another comment that I forgot to make about the, the requirements for a, a supermajority that might take place is, you know, I believe, well, I don't believe, I know that the development plan was in exchange for the residents dropping their petition. Correct?
We were told by, by Carmen that if we had a, a documented development agreement, signed development agreement, they would remove the petition. Whether or not they do that, that's, that's neither here nor, nor there. But what we're trying to do is provide the neighborhood comfortability with what we're moving forward.
So, if in fact the, the neighborhood does drop the petition, and if they decide to do a new petition that I have been told would be required because it's a new plan, I just wanted to make everyone in the room aware that, that in, in and of itself, if it's twenty percent of the residents within two hundred feet, then that would also kick in the requirement of the, uh, supermajority. Is that right, Bren?
That's correct, and it's, it's the owners of twenty percent of the land, not twenty percent.
Twenty percent of the land.
The land area.
The land area within two hundred feet. So it could be one person, for example.
And that would also kick in the need for a supermajority if in fact, you know, the council wanted to disagree with what planning and zoning recommended. I just, I just wanted to make that point clear.
If I can make one more point clear, um, our attempt to go back through planning and zoning is not an attempt to deceive or, um, in- or imply that we're able to navigate a system. I think we went through planning and zoning at a time when staff maybe, you know, we've had a number of changes since that point in time. And I think everyone has a more holistic understanding of the project now, and we'd like to understand what staff's comments are for that, but it's certainly not to navigate a bureaucratic system or be, play games in any way. Thank you for your comments, appreciate those.
Thank you, gentlemen. Bren, do you have something else? Okay, I thought you were going to speak. Okay, so that's the developer, I, this is not a public hearing, I do not have, y'all go ahead and sit down. I do not have any requests for citizens to speak, but I'm guessing that some people want to speak. So, if you want to speak, anybody want to speak, raise your hand. Who would like to speak? At least one, anybody else? All right, come on up, please. Anybody else who wants to speak after this, you certainly may.
Hi, I'm Carmen Drake, and I guess I was called out on the carpet. Okay, this is what happened, zoning, I've always, from the get-go of this, I have tried to work some type of deal between the developer, the city, the citizens, make everybody happy. Because, you know, we all want everybody to be happy, and I have tried that over the months. The last email, I've emailed, I've emailed Mr. Mason Meyer, the day after the zoning denied, that they received, and I, and I asked him, well, what is your next step? And he said, well, he doesn't know. And I said, you know what? What, these are the things that the citizens, we want, we want the masonry, we want the setback, but we want a binding agreement, binding, okay? I wrote that out, I need a binding agreement, that was a month ago. So last Friday, I get an email saying it's gonna happen, okay, I put it actually on Facebook, so it's public record, me saying this is gonna happen. And then just to find out a couple hours later, well, in, in an email, I've never said I will withdraw the petition. The thing was said that Mason said that, hey, you're gonna withdraw your petition as we do this agreement, basically exchange one for the other. I've never said once that I would drop the petition, and I've always, I made it in, in an email very clear that the person who submitted the person, the petition is the person who can drop the agreement. And I'm, I was just as shocked as, as anybody, because I found out, well, first of all, by, by the attorney, that this is not a binding agreement. So I was like, well, I'm asking myself, and I'm gonna ask you guys that, I mean, why are we here voting on something if it's not binding? I mean, this is my stand, I, I don't want to be too emotional about this, it's just, it's been a very long journey, and to find out, because we was towards the end, I was thinking, okay, maybe we're gonna wrap this up now. This is done deal, and then I found out later, it's not a done deal, and here we are again, talking about this, and now we finding out we have to go back to P and Z, and I'm like, hmm, not so great, but if that's what is gonna have to happen, so be it.
What do you think, we know we're talking about the agreement tonight, what do you think about the agreement? If we can make it binding as we discussed this evening?
Sir, I will hold another meeting with the neighbors within the 200 feet and get an overall count. Because the last thing I've heard is they're pretty upset, because, like I said, I've been like the voice of trying to reason here with the citizens, and I'm telling them, oh, this is gonna get done today. And then a few hours later, I'm like, I'm so sorry, change of plans. And we will hold another meeting, because I'm not just speaking, I'm not speaking for myself, I'm, I'm here, yes, I am here speaking, but there's a bunch of people behind me who might not be here today, but they are talk, and I want to know what's, what's best for us, the ones in the, within the 200 feet. You know, that, that, that's my take on it, and, like I say, I don't want to get, this is not, I'm, I'm trying not to be emotional, it's just, it's been a very long road, and just think that we have to go through the whole process again, and to think that, you know, to hear stuff like, we might not have the major majority, which we will if we want to have the major majority again, you know, if, if a petition is a petition, we can get a new one, it's just, I don't know why you're asking to withdraw a petition if we have an agreement and you are applying for a new case, because then that old petition doesn't even apply to the new zoning. It's just very confusing, so I'm gonna let you guys know.
If we, if we could make the, the development agreement binding today, is that good?
Is that good?
I mean, is that okay with you?
Like I said, I would have to talk to the rest of the people, because at this point, everything has changed. Because we have found out now that the city has to find, first of all, find out what they have to do, because as right, right, right now, we don't have anything, it's just something on a piece of paper.
No, we're gonna do something today, I mean, if we have to, if we have to incentivize this, we're gonna do a development contract today. That's what we're saying, is if we do that today with everything that you guys want in that development contract, is that okay?
Well, that is not everything, I was asked specifically, what are the two things that are really, really critical, right? And those were the things, the masonry, and as of what I'm understanding now is that there's also other concerns as in safety and stuff like that, so I don't want to step out of my bounds and speak for 50 other people.
So, I mean, here's my thing, the safety thing, stuff like that, we can come back and literally hold on that when we vote to zoning, things like that. This is just for the binding contract with the three, there's three things on it, which I thought was absolutely must-have critical, that was from you all. Now, what ran into a hiccup, and I'll be honest with you, I got frustrated too. When all of a sudden I found out, oh, yeah, we wrote this, but it's non-binding, now I'll be honest with you, I sent an email and said, this thing ain't even worth the paper written on if it's not binding. It's not giving the citizens what they want, so.
I feel, I feel like this, if, if we're gonna go through the entire process all over again, there is no need for me to make a decision about this today.
Right, yeah, I agree.
There is no need for me to be put on the point right now, make a decision right now, because we're gonna have to go through the whole process.
Agree.
Again.
The whole process is gonna contain this development contract, this binding contract.
Why are we going back to?
Well, because they have, they have, they have design changes and things like that.
Since we're so transparent tonight, I was told somebody in the city recommended for them to do that, because I asked about it, I said, why would you do that? Why would you go back to planning and zoning?
They have the legal right to do that, right? Bren, can you explain, I mean, they have the, the developer has their, the owners have the legal right to go back to.
They do.
Explain how that works.
They do, they can withdraw their pending application and resubmit based on changes for convenience, et cetera, they have the legal right.
Is there not, is there not a time limit on how many times they can go back to P and Z? I'm just asking, if they were to go again and it got denied, and they have to come before the city council, can they do it again?
So they, if council denies the application, then there's a one-year waiting period.
I guess it ain't whether they had a legal right or not, it's the, they're trying to think, their psyche, why, why, why are they even doing that? That, that's the question she asked, is it whether it's legal or not?
Well, and.
Me and you can't answer that.
No. I mean, and obviously, you know, if, if the understand, I'm not going to speak for the developer, but if the developer's understanding was the petition of protest would be withdrawn, that doesn't fix it alone. They also need P and Z to recommend approval. So logically, you would seek a different vote from P and Z if you believed that the property owners would withdraw their petition. And if the developer's just learning tonight that the petition will not be withdrawn, or there's a question about whether it will be withdrawn, they reserve the right to not pursue the new application. If the development agreement tonight is not approved, they reserve the right to not pursue their new application, and they're, they're learning things tonight as well, and so that all remains to be seen.
You have any questions, or anything else, ma'am?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. All right, somebody else? Yes, ma'am, please. Enter and sign in, please.
Hello, I'm Marilyn Tolliver, I know that you've all heard from me more than once, via email and phone calls, and some of you have met in person as well, I've been at all the meetings. And I will just, so that you know, I was adamantly opposed at the, for the initial, at the initial plat development, I did not, I am right at the end of Westwood and Spring Hill. So we're at that place where the road is not connected, and, you know, that's, that's where we are, so we, we have a very vested interest. However, after hearing the HHS and talking about all the different things, the compromise, I mean, they did, they have made a lot of compromises. There has been a lot of change, there has been a lot of he said, she said, blah, blah, blah. Really, I don't care about any of that, what I care about is long-term what's gonna be behind there. So I can't speak for anybody except myself, but what, what my husband and I feel strongly about is, at this moment, it is zoned multifamily. What we, and there's nothing, I have nothing against apartments, but I frankly don't want concrete right backed up to my back fence and dumpsters, I mean, I don't. And so if, if this is not all agreed upon, and we know, we all know that it's, it's multifamily, we would love to have, sure, we'd love to have apartments with, you know, a nice park and a nice, you know, some nice restaurants, but theoretically, we know that's not gonna happen, we're not, you know, we're not, that's probably not gonna happen in the commercial development. So I, after all of those things, then I resent my emails, I signed, I signed the original petition. But then I sent you several emails and spoke to all of you about that I had changed my mind, that I did support this development. If it was an either-or, that I would hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission would grant the, grant the rezoning, and that the council would approve this development. As I said, I'd love for it to stay vacant forever, but I also know that the Saginaw community and the growth and the planning, that that's going to happen regardless of whether we want it or not. So I would urge you to really think about what's best for the, for the community.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? This is your chance. Any other questions, comments? Okay, council, for a call for a vote, any other questions the council has needs clearing up? Any other questions you have for staff, developers, attorney, anything? Mr. Beasley?
So, in, in this development contract, we can, we can put the dollar amount for the, for the, the fees. Also.
Can we, are you gonna say a dollar amount, or you?
$10,000.
I'll just, can we?
We can waive permit fees up to $10,000.
Up to, but not to exceed $10,000, something like that?
Not to exceed $10,000.
Okay.
And, and as far as the trees go, I mean, you know, we can buy the trees.
But that's not within this agreement, though.
That's, that's not part of, okay.
That doesn't need to be in this agreement, that's separate. Other questions for this agreement? Mayor Proton, Mr. Lawson? If not, I will entertain a motion on this agreement, and you'll need to add the up to, if you want the up to, but not to exceed $10,000.
Mayor, I move that we accept the creation and action regarding the development agreement with HHS residential regarding the exterior masonry and neighborhood setback requirements on the land described approximately 20.8587 acres of land. And described as the abstract.
That's okay, you don't need to.
To include 10,000.
Up to, but not to exceed.
Up to 10,000, not to exceed, to make this a binding contract.
So essentially a waiver of permit application fees up to $10,000.
Does that make sense?
It does, yes, and I'll, I'll make the change and include the appropriate language in the agreement.
Okay, do I have a second on that? Any one second there? Mr. Beasley? Okay, all of them favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, those passes. Development Greek passes, all right, thank you, folks. Moving forward, item number eight, eight is, at 7:04, we're in a public hearing. Clarification Action Regarding Ordinance 2021-DS14 Ordinance, meaning Ordinance 2002-DS4, zoning regulation, talking about extended stay hotels. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Rice.
Thank you, Mayor, you, you, you received a, a, a presentation at your last council meeting regarding this ordinance. We took that back through Planning and Zoning Commission last week, and they unanimously recommended approval. I'm not going to go through the details of the ordinance, John Severantes is, is here, he was part of the presentation team the last meeting, but I think maybe you had questions or concerns regarding that. It's essentially that we have two land uses in our, in our zoning ordinance, one for extended stay motel hotel, and then just for motel, hotel motel. So this is to try to create separation in the way those are used. The hotel motel are being used as a long-term rentals and is creating issues with, with crime and whatnot. So this is a, try to remedy some of those, those causes, so anyway, I'll leave it at that, if you have any questions, between John and I, the city manager, we'll try to answer those.
Yes, we had an excellent presentation from Susie last time, I think we all, it's all fresh in our minds, so, questions, Gabe, you want to add something?
Yeah, married council, the intent of this ordinance is to regulate a condition that we don't have ordinance authority currently to regulate, and that is the use of hotel motels for long-term stays. So for extended stays, and it's all outlined in the ordinance, six months plus, the fire chief and others could comment on this, you know, some of these facilities are being used in the manner that's, that's the same as an apartment complex, and they're not built for that. So this is based on health and safety concerns, the intent of the regulation is to outline requirements for the operator, keep some records, that sort of thing. Very common in our region for extended stay regulations, so happy to answer any questions, John may be happy to answer any questions as well.
Council, you got questions? Questions about this, I mean, I, Nicky, yes, please.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
So I understand the, putting the dates on for the extended stay, that got, I really got no problem with that. Where I'm getting heartburn is the other requirements we're putting on, like, and I've, I've really tried to look, I went, you did send me the police stuff, I mean, there were some things of higher police, there also prostitution. I just can't connect the dots, and then when I look at ordinances, we've got ordinances, and it, it seems like to me on, on a lot of the, these ordinances and stuff, it does make it harder on us to, to do them. But in some cases, for the citizen stuff, harder is not necessarily bad, I mean, you know. Then the last thing I struggled with on this is the extra things like, well, we can see who's, who's there. Again, in the United States, we're innocent until proven guilty, you don't need, I, I struggle, why do you need to be sticking your nose in a private man's business? Unless they have something, if you drive through there and you run a license plate, and that's to a convicted felon, then you, absolutely, now you got probable cause. So these are the things that I, I'm really looking at this, and I'm, I'm putting it, and like I say, the original stuff, what you're saying, absolutely, not a problem, but all this other stuff, the extra cameras, things like that, that you're piling on top of these, some of them, and I understand that there's two that's bad and one that's good, well, unfortunately, you're, you're beating up on the poor good guy too, along with it. So anyways, that, that's where I'm struggling with all of this, is, is all these little extra things you all have added, that's gonna add cost to a person who's running a business, and then privacy. I really don't know if you, we got any business on why the guy's there if he's not doing anything wrong. So anyways, that's all I got to say.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I have cameras in my daycare, and I always tell the employees, they can be your friend or your enemy. If you're doing right, you don't gotta worry about it, if you're not doing right, you better watch out, that's what, that's basically the way I look at it.
Yeah, but it, I mean, it's, you've got them there, I'm not telling you.
No, 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 I'm just saying that the motel hotel, I mean, it would be the same thing.
But this is us telling them they have to. But that's why I said that.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, no problem.
I got you.
Yeah, I've been to these motels, and they need to be cleaned up. I would not want to stay there at a couple of these, candidly, and that's unacceptable, so that's part of this reason, we don't want them to turn into de facto apartments, we want them to be used for their use, that's why this, we're really adding some teeth to some things, regulations, ordinances we didn't have and didn't have specifically laid out, and for the enforcement, I mean, absolutely, I have talked to our police folks, and we run so many calls to these units. And so that's just a really rough part of town that we really need to address, and we. address. And we have sort of, I want to say, turned a blind eye. We have not addressed it strongly enough in the past, so I'm, I think it's a good step. Yes, Gabe?
Mr. Mayor, Council, just one comment. You know, this is not a novel issue for the city councilor of the city. Like, prior to my time here, maybe in 2017 or 2016, there was issues with a certain operator, brought to the attention of the owner. They were corrected, and then we have arrived at a similar circumstance. So, I hear Councilmember Lawson's points, and I understand the concern. This is just another means to address an issue that we don't currently have capacity to address, and I think the likelihood that someone is staying, you know, long-term is a pretty low probability event, although it does happen, and our police and fire, you know, run a lot of calls at these locations, and, you know, you do have some long-term tenants there. So, that's the intent. And again, this is common in our region, common thing to regulate.
Mayor, did you have a comment? Do you have a question?
Well, I would just state that just having this ordinance will make it less attractive to the criminal element, and it will make it easier for our police to follow up and be able to arrest certain people because of the information that they will now have. Is that correct, Chief? And there has been shown that there is a need for this because the situation had gotten so bad. So, this would be a way of deterring that criminal activity.
All right, this is a public hearing, so if any citizens want to speak on this issue, now's your chance. Just approach the mic. Anybody want to talk on extended stay motel? If not, at 7:12, I take us out of a public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance number 2021-14.
Mayor, pro team. Do I have a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, folks. Thank you, staff. Thanks for the hard work on this. Item number nine, at 7:12, we're in a public hearing. Clarification Act regarding ordinance for the city Saginaw meaning Penix A zoning, zoning ordinances, providing et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, talking about, yeah, carports. Rick Drice?
Imagine that.
Rick Drice Show.
You have seen this action of carports before. Earlier this year, in March, we added carport allowance within emergency services, police, fire, et cetera, to protect vehicles. Of course, we have an overlay district where carports are allowed, and then areas outside of that carport district are not allowed, which is within our zoning ordinance. I placed a memo or letter from CLX Ventures as the developer for the Grand, which we just approved the final plat, you approved the final platform this evening. They have requested that they be able to install carports, and so, if you, I guess if you look at it logically, I mean, you know, apartment complexes, unless they have garages, which many don't, there really is no protection for vehicles. So, perhaps carports within multifamily is a reasonable request. So, we brought forth this ordinance for your consideration. I think perhaps, again, like I said, how we got here today with the carport overlay was, were probably proliferation of carports, and it was a way to try to regulate that or to keep that from just being citywide. And so, we probably perhaps have not had an apartment development since that was enacted, perhaps, but so, maybe an oversight, but at any rate, I think it's a reasonable request. And so, P&amp;Z considered the ordinance amendment at their last meeting, and unanimously approved that it be forwarded for your, for approval, and staff recommends approval also.
Counsel, any questions on carports? Mr. Lawson? Yes, sir.
A lot of us don't, aren't allowed to have carports in our house. I'm one of them, okay? My truck won't fit in my garage, but I still don't get any perceptions of my car being damaged. I don't understand bad weather, hail should be, should be the same as them. So, if I don't get a carport, why do they get a carport?
I buy a smaller truck. I don't mean it could be car, but I mean, that, I think, was in the older areas of Saginaw, you know, that was the problem, as I understand it, was that the garage wouldn't accommodate, you know, vehicles. And so, carports were installed to try to accommodate, provide some level of protection, but...
Whatever reason we don't allow carports in the newer neighborhoods, whether it be safety or something, I haven't heard why all of a sudden, just because it's apartments, they get exempt from.
Because they have absolutely no opportunity for protection unless the apartment provides...
But I got no opportunity.
You have a garage.
My truck won't fit in my garage.
That's your fault.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Well, they have no garages or anything, so they wouldn't have...
But that's your fault. They rented there.
Well, that's true. That is true.
I'm just saying, let's supply apples and apples, and oranges and oranges.
Gabe, you have a question?
Mayor, Councilmember Lawson, a common question that staff gets. So, any subdivision where there are covered parking spaces, garages, carports are not allowed. So, you know, basically, any subdivision in the last, what is, maybe 30 years?
I think primarily the problem, well, yes.
Say, that time period, have garages. For the people that buy appropriately sized trucks, they can park them in their garages, but that's the intent.
Well, and I would add, I mean, if, the last time that we considered this an ordinance amendment or text amendment to the zoning ordinance in March, the question was raised by your predecessor about, you know, why don't we allow carport citywide? I mean, that's, if council's direction is to go back and look at that ordinance and just repeal or revise the ordinance to allow it citywide, then that's certainly something that staff would make happen.
Yeah, I was just trying to look and compare. I mean, it's apartments. They, I know they don't have garages, but a lot of people have stuff in their garages and can't park in their garages, too. So, to me, it's the same, so.
Well, but that's a garage. It's not a storage shed. I mean, I'm just saying. I know my garage has stuff in it, too, but, you know.
Yeah, and historically, the areas that we have a lot of carports were grandfathered in. They were before this, you know, 30, 40 years ago before this. That's how those neighborhoods, the older neighborhoods are allowed to have carports. We have not allowed any of the new neighborhoods to have carports. We do make the exception here, you know, just for the multifamily, the grandfather, and then the public facilities, the community facilities, so.
Well, my thing is, if we're going to say no carports, dad gone it, let's say no carports, and they can build garages. I've seen apartments with garages.
I have no appetite for having carports in regular neighborhoods. I don't think that's aesthetically pleasing, especially if there's garages available. And I think that was our rationale. And multifamily do not have any garages available, so that would just be a few areas, very limited. It would not be spread over the city. So, that's the rationale. That's what we have done before, and that's how this sort of came about.
Well, my wife, my daughter lives in Original Hills in an apartment, and she has a garage.
And some do, you're right, but not all, so.
I'm just applying the same stick. They can build a garage, same as I can build, buy a smaller truck.
I think when they build a garage for an apartment complex, I think it's pretty expensive to have a garage. It's probably like, I don't know, $100 a month or something, which is a lot.
I think she pays 75, something.
Yeah, that would add up after a while for nothing. You know that they don't belong, I mean, they don't own, but whatever.
What does anybody else think? Any other comments and questions? Mayor?
I'm in favor of the ordinance. I think, you know, the apartments deserve to have that protection.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Mr. Beasley, hadn't heard from you. You got anything? Do they have a carport? Okay. There you go.
He's not going to say nothing. And he has a lot of shade from Fit and His Planet, so, right?
All right, so, this is a public hearing. Any one of the audience want to speak on this issue? Yes, sir. Approach.
I'm Brack St. Clair, for those of y'all that don't know. And I would urge the council to approve this ordinance, and then revisit, if it so desires, on the residential neighborhoods at a later point. I think this is good for the apartments. I think it's good for the community. And if people want to pay a nominal fee to be able to protect their car from hail damage, I think they should be able to do that, so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I can't. Katie Johnson, so I know everybody. If you don't know me, you're under a rock. Nikki, they make hail covers for your truck that blow up.
It blows up. They're pretty neat looking.
But as someone who lived in an apartment for a while and didn't have a carport when hailstorms came in, I mean, we didn't have anywhere to go, and you can't retrofit a garage on these apartments. It's not logical. It's not feasible, and these people are going to pay way too much for them. So, they should have that protection. I do think that you should revisit carports for single-family homes. Maybe we can look at what they're made of. I don't know if the legislature said you can't do that either with carports, but we know how they like to be. But I think it's something you can definitely look at with aesthetics possibly later on, but I think it's something you should pass. Let's give them a chance. Maybe they might be able to afford a home. So, why should they lose their car because they can't buy a home yet?
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience want to speak on this issue? Questions, comments? Counsel, any other questions before we move on? If not, at 7:21, I take us out of public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Beasley?
Mayor's trying to do it down here.
Oh, really? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mayor. I didn't see you, Mayor.
Well, we don't have a number. It's 2021-blank. Do we have a number?
Ordinance number 2021-16.
Is 1-6? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2021-16 as presented.
Okay. You have a second? Mayor, pro team seconds. All of them in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, yes. Thank you, Rick. Item number 10, Clarification Act regarding approval of ordinance 2021-15, authorizing issuance and sale of Saginaw Texas General Obligation Bonds. For that, my name is Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Today, we received bids for the $9 million general obligation bonds, and we have Mark McClain here from Sanco Capital to let you know the results of the bids.
Thank you, Mark.
My name is Mark McClain. I'm at Sanco Capital Markets. Pretty excited to be able to bring this report to you, but give you a little bit of background. We started this, as you know, with bond election a few months back. Very successful bond election, and we're starting projects as we speak. This first set of, and Buck Kimball is your bond attorney with McCall, Parker, and Horton. He'll be able to answer any questions that come up on the legal side of the ordinance. So, we're selling $9 million, or we're looking for your authorization, $9 million of general obligation bonds. This is your first set of bonds after your successful bond election. The projects are $5 million, whoops, I need longer arms, $6.08 for Streets. When I first started coming here, I didn't need glasses at all.
You and me both.
$700,000 to fund the beginning of the Parks and Senior Center, and $1.005 to start the funding and design for the library. We got all that information together, put an offering document, got your audits together, and went to the rating agencies. Your audits, and you've heard me talk about this, this is a broken record for y'all. Every year, your finances get better. You all manage your systems, your finances, your operations, the management process that you have. Kim, Dolph, and Gabe have done a great job communicating what's going on with Standard and Poor's, what's going on here, to give them really good flavor for what's going on in Saginaw and how well things are operating. They can only get so much out of the audits, and what they get out of the audits is terrific, but the color that they can add is really, takes us to the next step on selling these bonds. So, Standard and Poor's came back with a double A rating. The highest we can get is triple A. Then, it's double A+, then double A, then double A-, then A+, A keeps going. So, it's the third highest rating, and it really makes these bonds attractive to the investors. So, once we get that information out there, we then set up a bid, a bidding process, and at 11 o'clock today, we accepted the bids. And you can see right here the summary of these bids. And what we like is to see bids come from throughout the country, and that's what happened. And many of these firms pool others. They form syndicates, and so Raymond James may be bidding with many others, Baker Group, BOK Financial. So, they form syndicates, and they put their best bid at 11 o'clock. And you see here, our best bid was 1.593%. Now, this is something else that's kind of remarkable, and it is, again, another broken record. These are some of the lowest rates we've gotten, and we've seen the interest rate. People start thinking rates were going up, and they did go up. The 10-year Treasury bond hit about 180, March, plus or minus, February or March. Since then, yesterday, it broke 120. It came all the way back down. So, our timing of selling this has nothing to do with us, but our timing is impeccable. And this 159 is going to be really good for you because it frees up other capacity. Our payments are lower, so you have other bonds to be issuing in the future that freed up more capacity. So, we hit the target that Kim set out earlier. Our first-year payment is within a couple of thousand dollars of that, and then freed up more capacity in the future. The numbers that we ran, I thought we were running preliminary numbers when we put together the official statement at aggressive rates. Well, we were running them at 2 and 1/4, which I thought were really good. I mean, that, if we got that, I would have been happy. To get 159 is really, in my mind, remarkable. And that difference is $500,000 worth of savings. When we sold this to, when we shared this with the voters to let them make decisions, we were showing 3 and 1/2%. So, dramatically lower than where we thought we would be because we didn't know what interest rates would do, and they've just really moved in our favor. So, I'd like to also point out the second-place bid and just see the difference. First-place bid is 1.593066. The second-place bid is 1.593312. So, it's out four decimal points is the difference. I mean, so really tight. So, they know what the market is on these bonds. Even the third place is 1.63. That's only four basis points different. So, really a tight group, really excited to be able to bring this to you. Our recommendation is to award these bonds to the winning bidder, which is Raymond James and Associates. Happy to go through anything else. I don't want to take too much more of y'all's time, but really, Kim, Gabe, and Dolph really sold this to Standard and Poor's, really helps set, sets this up for the future, and I'm really proud to bring these final rates to you. Again, you have an ordinance. Clark put that ordinance together. If there's questions about that, otherwise, you know, our recommendation, as I said, is to award to Raymond James.
If I recall correctly, the bonds we sold last summer were 2.1, I believe?
That's correct.
So, this is a significant savings over that, which I'm amazed. I was just, I wasn't sure what to expect.
Well, I thought rates were going, I've been wrong for a lot of years. You've heard me. You've been on as mayor for a long time, and, I mean, on council before that, and I've thought we've been at our bottoms for a long time. Well, we're benefiting from it. The longer we can keep these low-interest rates, that does give you more capacity because you have a lot of these other projects coming on that the voters gave you authority to proceed when you're ready. So, that really is, helps them, keeps the INS tax rate lower.
Yes, this benefits our citizens in multiple ways, lower taxes and a lower, less payment overall. So, it's amazing. I, we were hoping last year when we started this discussion that it would work out this way. We weren't sure. We were just hoping this is, we were fortunate to get it this way. The timing worked out just, just amazing, and the voters approved it, and we're just enacting the will of the voters, and timing worked out that we got a great, great deal. I have never seen an interest rate this low. It's just amazing to be less than 2%, 1.59, and people are bidding on you and lining up to buy your bonds. Counsel, any questions for Mark? Yes, Mayor?
Not a question, but just a comment for the audience that this is an example of how we in Saginaw are very conservative about our projected interest rates, et cetera, and we always try to make sure we don't underestimate something. And in this case, we could have underestimated, and we would have been correct, but we, we don't want to mislead the community, and we want them to, we want to give them the worst case. And as it turned out, we happily didn't have to have the worst case. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Other questions, comments?
Anybody else? Anything else? Any other questions for Mark? All right, uh, if no other questions, thanks, sir, appreciate it, thanks for the hard work, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion that we award it to Raymond James and Associates at 1.593.
Okay. One second. All those in favor, raise your right hand? Those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have two signatures. This is something I picture of and send to the bidder.
Okay.
And this is the official bid form.
Yes, sir.
Clark, you're gonna leave, leave documents?
Yep.
They're all available, so you can go there. So, if you have a, the, the big stack of legal documents, but we'll be left here.
I will happily sign this. Thank you, Mark, appreciate it. How long you been our counsel, Mark?
Well, probably 15 years, but Dan Allman, who was, was there for maybe 20 years before.
I remember Dan, yeah.
So, you know, we collectively, it's been a long time, and he, he's still going.
Is he?
He's not in the bond business anymore.
Okay.
Retired, enjoying life.
Hey, send him my best regards, will you?
I'll, I'll call him this week.
Please, thank you, thank you. All right, thanks, guys, great news for us, great news for the citizens, that means lower taxes. All right, item number 11, consideration regarding authorized internal borrowing between General Fund and the Capital Projects Fund for completion of Bailey-Boswell project. For that, Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is more of a housekeeping item. Um, as we near the end of the Bailey-Boswell overpass project, which I'm sure everybody is happy about that, where we started looking at the cash flow, and, um, it's just a matter of, we are making monthly payments to the contractor, but we re, get reimbursed from the Tarrant County, um, on a quarterly basis for 50% of our expenditures. And doing some conservative estimates, I wanted to make sure that we would be able to cover cash flow-wise, those payments through the end of the, um, project. I just did rough estimates, I can assure you that these numbers aren't going to be exact, but I wanted to just give you an idea, a picture of what it looks like and why I'm asking you to do this. Our financial management policies require City Council approval if we want to borrow from one fund, um, to another. And that's all this is, is that I'm asking you if it should be necessary, um, approval to temporarily borrow from the general fund balance to make these payments until we get reimbursed from Tarrant County. We are not asking for any additional money, there is no anticipated additional funding necessary by the city. It would just be temporary, um, for cash flow purposes.
And there's a chance we won't even need to do this, correct?
It's, it's very possible. I just wanted to be, err on the side of, of conservative. I want to be able to write our checks when they come due, and, um, so I want your approval, um, in order to do that, if it should become necessary.
And so, just so everybody knows, um, Tarrant County is, is contributing 5.5 million dollars to the overpass overall.
Over-
I'm sorry, six point, six point, I'm sorry, meant six point, 6.5, thank you, Dolph. 6.5 million, uh, so that's what we're talking about, but they reimburse us, so.
They reimburse us quarterly.
Yeah, so, that's what's on, but so, the county has done us a good term, but we just need to make sure we can pay the bills appropriately before payments come, so that's what we're just-
It's looking good.
No, it's ahead of schedule too, so.
I know, I'm excited.
Um, questions? Yes, ma'am?
Uh, just a question for Kim. I don't know if I misread this, I found it curious that then we have to pay interest on the loan that we borrow from the other fund?
It, we, we could, but the interest rates between, I mean, the, the interest rates we're earning from tax pool are so small that it would hardly be worth the effort to calculate it.
It just seems weird that we would even have to do-
So, that is, that's not included in the, in the proposal, but if you feel like that needs to be, then we could do that.
Oh, I, I just thought it was curious and wouldn't have ever thought that that would be necessary, but I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Other questions for Kim? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would, uh, move that we approve resolution 2021-18.
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Thanks, sir. Thank you, Kim. All right, item number, so where are we? Item number 12, so at 7:34, reset into workshop. Item number 13, fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget workshop. And again, I believe tonight is Kim Quinn Show, right?
Okay, it's my, my night to get to talk. Um, so, we're gonna go over, we've been having budget workshops discussing issues throughout the spring and now the summer, and, um, we, based on the accelerated timeline, um, with the anticipation of, of the de minimis tax rate, we are, um, moving the schedule up. Um, the proposed budget was submitted to the City Council and posted to the website last Thursday. Um, and so, we are coming down to the end, and so, we are going to go over final reviews of, um, some funds tonight, and we'll finish up and have a first public hearing at the first council meeting in August. The Crime Control and Prevention District, we call it the CCPD Fund, is the first one that we'll go over. Um, these are similar, I'm using similar graphs to the ones that I used last time when we were talking about the current year. So, you've got a set of bars that are, all of these, um, slides will look the same way. We've got, uh, bars for revenues and expenditures. The blue is the adopted budget of the current fiscal year. The red is the revised budget for the current fiscal year. The green is what we're estimating to end this fiscal year with. And the proposed is the proposed budget for next fiscal year, and that's purple. So, you've got a set of bars for revenues and a set of bars for expenditures. The main revenue source in, uh, the CCPD Fund is the three-eighths sales tax that we collect monthly. Um, we have, we, we are anticipating collecting about 101.4 million next year. Um, this current year, you'll see that we have, um, a higher level of estimated, and that is because in May, we had a one-time audit adjustment. It's very common for us to have audit adjustments monthly when we collect, um, our sales tax. But the, in May, we happen to have a very large one-time audit adjustment. I know that's not going to happen again, and so, that's why the, um, proposed revenues are slightly, are down from the, um, for, for next year. The estimates for next year are conservatively estimated as the same, about the same as we are collecting in this current year, less that one-time audit adjustment of about $60,000.
Can you, can you clarify what an audit adjustment means, so everybody understands?
Sure, so, um, this, the state comptroller's office, um, makes adjustments, audit adjustments, as they find discrepancies, and a very common audit adjustment is, is if a business inadvertently pays the wrong city. So, sometimes people get confused, maybe about, are they in the city of Fort Worth? Are they in the city of Saginaw? So, I'm, I can't say you, tell you specifically what happened, but for example, if somebody paid the city of Fort Worth the amount that was owed to the city of Saginaw, that would be an audit adjustment. When it was caught, they would go back and correct all of the previous payments that had been made and make it to the correct entity.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, that's the revenue side of things. On the expense side, in the CCPD Fund, um, we pay for 10 patrol officers, one jailer, one dispatcher, and half of a school resource officer from the CCPD Fund from these sales tax collections. Um, next year, we are, uh, the police department has requested the replacement of four patrol vehicles. We also pay for software, um, for their different, um, computer systems that they have over there, the record systems, the MDTs, and the fingerprint systems. And then, there's also replacement of bullet, uh, bullet-resistant vests.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, just have one comment. So, uh, mention this to you regarding the proposed budget. We have not included any, uh, PD positions, um, that would be effective October 1. Our intent is to bring back, uh, positions to you mid-year, uh, that would be funded out of CCPD, so.
How many?
Um, we have, with the school district likely creating their own police department, not this coming school year, but the following school year, uh, we have a position and a half, so three officers, the school district pays half, uh, of their, um, salary and benefits, so we're gonna keep those people. So, the intent is to come back mid-year and make that whole. Um, there's some lag time.
At 1.5 heads, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Um, there's some lag time, you know, we've talked about this in the past. We, um, and, and the chief could talk about it, but we're not getting certified applicants, so our only option is to put, uh, qualified, um, people through the academy, so there's a lag time. It doesn't make sense, knowing that we couldn't reasonably fill positions right on October 1st to do that, but I just want to remind you that, you know, that's our plan to address, uh, PD's concerns sometime mid-year.
And, um, the school resource office, we have three right now, right? So, that's paying half of three salaries.
Correct. It's correct.
The next slide is, is the numbers, and I'm not gonna spend too much time on this, except to, to say that, um, the year-to-date column, for those of you who are interested in the, in the nitty-gritty, the year-to-date would be through June, so 75% of our fiscal year, um, has, has gone through the end of June. Um, you'll see that, um, based on the estimated, uh, collections of sales tax with, and due to overall growth, as well as the one-time audit adjustment, instead of the budgeted use of fund balance of almost $55,000, it looks like we'll end up with almost $200,000, um, in addition, instead of using fund balance. The proposed budget, um, anticipates using a little over $15,000 in general, in, uh, CCPD fund balance, um, and that is due to the one-time, uh, replacement of the four patrol vehicles. Are there any questions regarding CCPD before we move on to the Drainage Utility Fund? Oh, I did want to mention, I think when we were talking about the, um, uh, current year estimates, when we were talking about CCPD, there was a question about when it was last approved, and it was last approved by voters in 2017 for 10 years, so it won't be up for reelection until 2027. Okay, if not, we'll go on to the Drainage Utility Fund. The main revenue source in the Drainage Utility Fund is the monthly fee, um, Drainage Utility Fee for residential customers, that's $5 a month. We collect about $820,000, $820,000 a year in this fund through those fees. The fund pays for true drainage maintenance workers from the general fund, half of an environmental specialist, and half of an environmental assistant that are, um, in the enterprise fund, the Water and Wastewater Fund. You'll notice that, um, in this current year, the expenditure side is a lot higher than we have for next year, and that was based on the, um, budget of the East Cement Creek Drainage Project, Phase 2. Um, for different reasons, this, uh, project has been delayed, and I just found out after I put these slides together that we have another delay with Encore. We're waiting for them to, um, relocate the utilities in order for us to do this project, so it has not been bid yet. Um, so, it's likely that we will not spend money in this year on the East Cement Creek Drainage Project. We will put it in for next year, and what they're doing, um, they're gonna, Randy said he thought that we would bid it in maybe September or October if Encore gets to go in on what they're need to be doing. So, we're going to bid both phases, Phase 2 and Phase 3, um, and depending on how the bids come out, we'll look to see if we have the funding to do that. Another thing that I wanted to mention, if we don't have the full cost of both phases in, um, fund balance, uh, which we won't know until we bid the project, um, we, uh, it's a possibility that the city will receive, um, American Rescue Plan funding, a federal, um, grant. Um, and so, this project may be eligible for funding through that money. So, we'll just have to wait and see how that progresses, and then, again, to wait and see on the bids. So, when we, when you see the proposed budget, um, it'll look a little bit different, knowing that, um, we'll have at least one phase of it next year. Next, the slide with the numbers, again, um, if we don't use about the 1.5 million dollars for the drainage project in the current year, um, we won't have the reduction of fund balance of 925,000, but it will roll into fund balance, so beginning fund balance will be more like 3.2 million.
When we find that out?
Um, well, the, we're looking at bidding maybe in September or October, depending on Encore.
Okay. When we find it, if we receive those funds from the-
Um, you know, it seems like it keeps getting delayed. The last I heard is that 90% of the cities have to complete their application before the state will receive the, the, the total funding.
Okay.
I think we were at 79%.
Though it's gonna be a while.
It's, well, it shouldn't be, I think, um, I know some cities, the larger cities have already started receiving it, but we're under 50,000, so we have to get it through the state.
Okay.
Not directly from the federal government.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions regarding Drainage Utility Fund? We'll move on to the Street Maintenance Fund then. This is funded with 1/8 cent sales tax. Um, the proposed revenue for next year is about, uh, $485,000. Um, again, this fund had an audit adjustment that same month, the month of May, the audit adjustment in this fund was about $43,000. Um, so, we're adjusting revenues to, um, to account for that audit adjustment. Um, overall, those still compared to last year were up 7% year-to-date, so we're still doing really, really good, sales, sales tax remains strong. Um, the big project in this, uh, fund was the Burlington Road Reconstruction Project. It was in this current fiscal year. We may still be able to begin it, um, this fiscal year, but it will not be completed. It will have to roll over into next year. We have budgeted for next year, um, spot repairs on Jarvis, the reconstruction of Delmar Court, Indian Crest, and Saddle Trail. I also have to say that, you know, Tarrant County is in the same boat that we are in. We're having, they are having a hard time filling their work crews, it's a hard, they're having a hard time finding, um, people that are working those crews, just like we are. And so, some of the projects that were scheduled for this year, um, may not get done this year, and will have to be pushed to next year, just depending on what they're able to get done. For those of you who are new and may not know this, um, we, um, just like other cities in Tarrant County, we have an agreement with Tarrant County, and we will provide the supplies, and they'll use their manpower, their crews, to do some of these street projects. So, the street projects that we have in the current year, Arcadia, Opel, and White Rock, uh, Right Rock Drive may not get done by the end of September and get pushed to next year as well. And again, um, the numbers may be a little bit different. Whatever doesn't get spent in this current year will get rolled into the fund balance, and we'll adjust it mid-year next year, fiscal year 2122. Any questions regarding the Street Maintenance Fund? Okay. Donations Fund. The main, um, sources, the main sources and uses in this fund are the, um, $1 that many people pay, um, in their monthly utility bill. They can pay up to a dollar in beautification, a dollar for parks, and a dollar for library per month. We also collect other miscellaneous donations in this fund and account for them here. The other main one is, uh, donations for train and grain. So, we keep these separate in this fund. The expenditures funded next year with donations, um, in animal services. There's vaccination program and animal, animal care, veterinarian care for the animals at the shelter. The, um, library is proposing to spend their donations, um, on their summer interns, and then this year, we have an admin intern that is, um, at the library, and so, the donations will pay for about $8,000 of that position. In the senior center, or the senior donations, there is, um, a proposal for $6,500 for storage cabinets for them to use while they're at their rec center. Um, in the library donations, we also pay for software licenses, we pay for books, and a lot of the special program fees are paid with library donations. In beautification, we pay for some of the mowing, um, on the rights-of-way. We pay for- We pay for the seasonal landscaping and holiday lighting out of beautification funds. Fireworks, the special programs are paid out of parks donations, and then in beautification for next year, we also have twenty-five thousand dollars, as we've had for the last two years, I believe, for the public art projects. That's where we've paid for the murals.
Since we're on donations, I have actually a comment that I forgot to tell y'all. Our friend at Adderbury Grain saw me on the comp plan on Saturday. He wants to up his donation to the train and grain this year, so let's reach out to him and help him do that. I know they donated in the past, I don't remember what it was, but he said he wanted to up it this year, so let's hold him to that.
Ms. Janice England is the chief bill collector of train and grain, so we will, we'll send her that way, sir.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I just thought of that. Sorry to interrupt you, Kim.
No, no problem. And, and it didn't make it to my slide, but it is in the numbers. I don't want Chief Spears to think I've forgotten him. The fire department is very good at collecting donations, and they have a budget in, for next year too, and that goes to pay for their projects, like the Easter, their special events, like the Easter egg hunt, the fire camp, and then they pay for some cert equipment too, out of their donations that they collect. Okay, any questions on the donations fund? And the last fund we'll talk about tonight is the General Escrow Funds. This is kind of a catch-all fund. We collect special revenues that have to be accounted for separately, and so we account for those revenues and the eligible expenses out of this fund. These are revenues and expenses that don't necessarily warrant a whole fund of their own, and so they're just kind of lumped together in the General Escrow Fund. The types of revenues that we collect in this fund are hotel motel tax, court technology fees, court security fees, so that's a fee that you pay as part of a ticket, if you, if you receive a ticket. The insurance deductible and claims are accounted for in this fund, and miscellaneous developer agreements or things like that. The items that are proposed, in the proposed budget for next year, for train and grain, we use ten thousand dollars for advertising, that's the amount that we pay for the radio station to come out, that's eligible to be paid out of hotel motel tax. We also have ten thousand budgeted for train and grain for entertainment. Again, that's eligible for, to be used by, for hotel motel tax. Out of the court security fees that we collect, we pay for the bailiff, an officer that works as bailiff during our court days. Out of court technology, we will be replacing four ticket writers next year for a total of about eleven thousand dollars. We budget an average of forty, about forty thousand dollars a year for insurance claims. As you recall, I think we talked about it last meeting, the, we had way more claims this year with the storms. I think this year we're going to be about two-hundred thousand, but this is where we pay for our expenses, and as we talked about before, we get reimbursed from our insurance provider, TML, so this is where the revenues and the expenses go in and out of this fund here. But we'll budget for an average year, about forty thousand in insurance claims. And then the farmer's market management contract is also included in this, next year's budget, and that's paid for out of hotel motel tax as well. That's all I've got to go over with you today. Are there any questions regarding on the General Escrow Fund?
Council questions?
Okay, so the budget calendar, we've got, today was a workshop. We'll receive our certified values probably Monday, I'm hoping for maybe Friday, so we'll be working on tax rate, on tax rates, and that will be presented to you at the next council meeting on...
Can you, I'm sorry, can you explain to everybody what certified tax values mean, please?
Sure. Tarrant Appraisal District values all of the property within the city, and by July twenty-fifth, they need to certify, certify those values, so they put their stamp of approval on it, saying that this is their best estimate as of this date. We know it's going to change, but we have to use some point in time to calculate our, make our tax rate calculations and comply with all of the things that the legislature makes us do. Does that stand true?
I just want to make sure everybody is clear on that. Just, just so everybody knows, our tax rate is, how much you pay in taxes is a multiplication of our tax rate the city sets, times the value of your house, which is set by, by TAD, by the county, so we don't control that, we don't control half of it. That's, you put those together, that's how you get what your tax bill is.
That's right, and we use those values to calculate the various tax rates that will be presented to you.
So we have to have the final value from TAD before we can do any kind of budget stuff.
That's right.
So we get estimates up until now, and they say we're close, we're close, but the twenty-sixth is, it's, it's the last one, it's approved, it's good to go, so that's what we've been waiting on.
That's the values that we legally use, yes.
So we can't move any faster than till we get that value, really.
That's right.
We're just guessing until then.
That's right. We do our best guess at, our best estimates up until then. So the next council meeting, the first council meeting in August, we'll have another, we'll talk about the budget. We will make, we will show you how the tax rate calculations come out. We will ask you to vote on a proposed tax rate. The actual tax rate that we will use for our levy, that you'll actually approve, will be August sixteenth. That'll be a Monday council meeting, instead of a Tuesday council meeting. We have to do that, just based on the de minimis tax rate timeline. But we will need for you to vote on a proposed tax rate, so that we can get our advertisements, that's also required by law, in the paper in time to meet the hearing requirements. So we'll have that published in the paper August sixth. If necessary, we can have a retreat on the fourteenth, and then the budget hearings and tax rate hearing, adopt the budget, and the tax rate will happen on August sixteenth.
So yeah, so council, we need to think about what we know now, based on what we're doing, and if we're going to require that fourteenth budget retreat. We have in the past, it really depends on how mature the tax, the planning is and our budget is, so think about that. We can, don't have to decide tonight. We can decide, I guess, by the third, we'll probably have to make that decision. That's, that's probably about right? Yeah. And then, of course, this is accelerated this year due to the potential of us using that de minimis tax rate, that's the state requirement, so we're accelerating by several, a couple of weeks at least, so that's, that's why we're doing this, and sort of a little bit cramped this year. Any questions for Kim?
No, it's my birthday weekend.
Oh, on Saturday? If we have it.
That's my birthday weekend.
Is it?
Yes.
I'll, I'll bake you, I'll bake you a cake, Charles.
Appreciate it. Cupcake or something.
Yeah. So typically, it's like eight to twelve is what we've done in the past. Yeah. It's not a hundred percent we're going to have it, but it's, we'll just, we'll see, so.
We'll get a cupcake.
I just wanted to thank Kim for all of her hard work, and anybody who helped her to speed up this process, so that we could qualify for the de minimis tax rate. I know that was probably a lot of extra hours and hard work, but, but the good thing is you'll get through earlier.
That's right. I'm, I'm the face, but really, everybody is, is part of the whole budget process. The finance department and all departments really put together all these numbers. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Kim? Any questions, any questions from the citizens? Anybody on the audience have any questions, concerns? All right, if not, at seven fifty-nine, reconvene back into regular session. Then also at seven fifty-nine, we adjourn for executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one dot oh-eight-seven, discussion regarding economic development. We will return to adjourn.
Yeah, Valerie's gone. At eight thirty, I'll reconvene back in the regular session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion we adjourn?
Matt, very second. All those in favor? Eight thirty, we adjourn. You got all that, Janice?